Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. I'm going to call to order the Placerville Planning Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Now, would you please call the roll? Mr. Rivas?
Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Chair Fran is noted as absent. Vice Chair Kine?
Here.
Commissioner Lepper?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Very good. All right. Bear with me just for a moment. I'm trying to make a technical adjustment here, which is going to take a while. Moving on, next on our agenda is for closed session reports, which we have none. And then we move on to item four, adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Ms. Lepper.
Okay.
And a second from Mr. Smith. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to item four is the consent calendar. All matters under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or unless any member of the commission or staff or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. And under our consent calendar is approval of the minutes from the meeting of February 6th, 2024, actually. I'm going to make a change, not 2023. So for our meeting of February 6th, it has been a while, but it's February 6th, 2024. I have a motion to approve the -- does anyone want to pull anything from the minutes?
No. Do I need to make an adjustment to the agenda there? I didn't even see that.
There's another small thing I was going to correct, but you guys were kind of fast on the --
Oh, on the?
Just the number 6,000. I don't know if we can --
And that is?
Anyway, it's just a small clerical correction, but --
Oh, I'm sorry, on the agenda?
Yeah, so I don't know if we maybe need to go back and adjust a couple of things on the agenda.
Certainly. Let's go back, revisit the adoption of the agenda. I'm sorry, I did not see that you had a question.
I didn't jump in fast enough, I'm sorry.
So we're going to go back up to item four because Mr. Carter has a correction on the agenda?
I just want to, I want to --
Go ahead.
Yeah, so correcting that date from 2023 to 24, thank you, and then removing the number 6,000 from the description of 10.1. I'm not sure what, I think that was maybe just a typing error. Yeah.
It's correct. It's the --
Oh, so it's okay, on the new one.
Okay, it's R16.
Thank you. I didn't even notice it was corrected on the new one, so.
Yeah, just so you know, that's how it's written in our zoning code, and it means that 6,000 square foot lots is a single-family zone.
So it's a 6,000 square foot lot.
Right.
So you want to add that?
I guess they said it's been corrected in the --
In our zoning ordinance, it's called the R16,000, it's a single-family residential zone.
Okay.
That's what it is on page one of the staff report here.
Okay. It's not a material change.
Totally.
Okay.
Good eye.
So, any other changes to the agenda? So that, does that require voting again?
I wouldn't think so, but staff will correct it in our --
May I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
Seeing the 2024 date and leaving the rest as is.
Okay. And second?
He did.
From Mr. Smith, thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Now we move on to item five, consent calendar, approval of the minutes. Does anyone request any changes? Pull anything for discussion from the minutes from previous meeting?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Did you say you moved?
Yes, I'll move approval of the minutes, yes.
So we have a motion to approve from Mr. Carter and a second from Ms. Lepper. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. I apologize, I'm having trouble hearing. So if you could all speak a little louder, just on my behalf, I'm going to do what I can. Thank you. Nothing was pulled from the consent calendar. We've now approved the amended minute, right, we passed the minutes. Okay, so we're on to item seven, items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda and within the subject matter, that's the jurisdiction of the planning commission. State law prohibits commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the planning commission under specified circumstances. Is there anyone in the public that wants to address the planning commission at this time? Okay. Seeing, we do have someone. You have to be, send up a flare. Good evening and welcome. If you would, please state your name for the record and --
I'm Michelle Rangel. I've been a resident of Placerville for about nine years.
I apologize, I cannot hear.
Oh, okay. Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay. Michelle Rangel. I've been a resident of Placerville for about nine years.
Okay.
And I'm not even quite sure if I'm in the right area or not. I've never come to one of these meetings before, but I am interested in getting some information as to who to contact to see about possi -- how, I guess I want to understand the process of how things, as far as retail, get put in Placerville. I'm interested to see why, or if there's any way that Winco, a Trader Joe's, even a Kaiser offshoot could be somewhere along the 50 corridor rather than just keeping it in El Dorado Hills where all the, is that because of a population issue? I'm just kind of trying to figure things out because I know I go next door all the time and people are always complaining why we don't have a Trader Joe's or even a Winco type store out here rather than nail salons, auto shops, fast food joints, the same old, same old. So that's why. I'm kind of curious, just to see.
Thank you for your comment, and I'm sure, Mr. Rivas, you can provide more information. I know that there is an economic development committee, so that might be of interest to you, but Pierre, could you?
I would need to talk to.
Sure, we have a Placerville Economic Advisory Committee. What I'm going to do is, is give you my card.
Okay.
So that you can reach me and we can have a discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, again, it's just, I see all these fast food joints come through and I'm just, God, why can't we get something different, you know, to attract people? Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you coming down and speaking to us and taking an interest in the community. All right. Anyone else have something to bring to the planning commission? Okay, so we'll close. Number seven, move on to number eight, written communications on non-agenda items. Are there any?
We have no written communications.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. And number nine, presentations in educational workshop sessions. We don't have any of those this evening. So that brings us to item 10, environmental assessments and public hearings. And our first item is under 10.1. It's a site plan review, historic review for 2968 Coloma Street. And I will, this is a consideration of a site plan review application within the single-family residential/historic district zone to modify an existing single-family residence to replace three aluminum windows and one wood window with Milgard-Tuscani vinyl casement windows. I will turn it over to Ms. Hunter for the staff report.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? I want to make sure. Okay. So planning commission approval is required for projects located within any of the city's four historic districts where the project includes modifications to the exterior architecture of the building as visible from the right-of-way. SPR 24-01 specifically includes the replacement of a single-hung black aluminum window on the southeast facade with a casement vinyl window, replacement of two horizontal black aluminum sliders on the southeast facade with two wide casement vinyl windows, and replacement of a wood casement window with a two-wide casement vinyl window on the northwest side, I believe. The visual diversity of Placerville's residential areas, especially residential historic areas, is a unique resource within the city. As described in the staff report, this property previously came before the commission in the late 2023 for SPR 23-11 and SPR 23-12. There are two dwellings located on the property, 2968 Coloma Street and 2925 Wood Street. Neither dwelling is included on a local, state, or federal listing for historic structures. It is the opinion of staff that the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9 Site Plan Review and Section 10-4-10 Historic Buildings in the City, with Goal F Policy 4 of the General Plan Housing Element and Goal G Policy 6 of the General Plan Natural, Cultural, and Scenic Resources Element, and in addition with the City of Placerville Development Guide. Overall, the proposed replacement windows are vinyl, a compatible substitute material, and include a valance grid pattern consistent with the existing feature windows along the front elevation. The windows for replacement are deteriorated and replacing them will continue the life and existing use of the subject dwelling while maintaining the characteristic facade of the structure and creating a more unified architectural appearance. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to secret guidelines section 15301 and 15331 as the project includes repair to an existing structure that will result in no expansion of the existing use and that the project will complete the maintenance and reconstruction in a manner consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of SPR 24-01, and conditionally approve 24, sorry, SPR 24-01 located at 2968 Coloma Street based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your concise and clear staff report. I did have one concern, and I think it's a wording change I will ask the other commissioners to consider, and it's the use of the term LITE instead of LIGHT. And I appreciate that you've made it clear, we're talking about a simulated divided light window as opposed to a classic or a strict definition of divided light where you have the panes of window physically divided by typically a wood material. In this case, it's, everything's interior to two panes of glass, so it simulates that divided light. And I think the use of LITE is kind of a marketing term, if you will, some of the manufacturers do that. So I appreciate that you have clarified it so that we know, we are talking about a simulated divided light, but anyway, I just want to make sure I'm clear that that is what we're talking about. Do any of the rest of you have questions for Ms. Hunter at this time?
Do not.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah, I have a couple. Sorry, pardon my --
Let me know if you need more.
I appreciate that. Pardon my voice. So a quick, couple of quick clarifications. So on page two of the staff report, the second paragraph, opinion of staff that the dwelling is a mix of craftsmen and bungalow-style architecture, including casement feature windows with valance divided light, which is that same, we talked about earlier. But just a clarification, so figure four, on page four, you highlighted that window on the front as an example of what you would consider to be a casement feature window? Because that window's not being replaced, but it was included in the staff report?
It's an example of what the applicant is proposing to --
Understood. Okay, just for clarification, yeah.
Similar window.
So that window's not being replaced, obviously, as part of the project, but it's just used as an example of what --
Correct.
Okay. My second question, sorry, give me one second here, I'm a bit disorganized this evening. So it says in the report that the windows, well, here we go. So the proposed project includes removal and replacement of existing degraded windows believed to have been replaced in the 1990s. So we're talking about three aluminum windows and one wood window. It's pretty safe to assume that that wood window was not replaced in 1990, it was probably just the three aluminum windows that were replaced in 1990, correct?
I believe the applicant may be able to speak more on this than me.
That might be a question for the applicant, okay.
My understanding is all four had been particularly replaced.
Okay, I'll ask that question of the applicant then, because that seems odd that they would replace it with three aluminums and one wood, but I'll ask the applicant that question. Pardon me. Let's see here, I guess, I think I will reserve the rest of this then until later on. That's my only question now for staff.
Any other questions for staff? At this time, we would like to ask the applicant to come to the podium, if you would please, and if you want to give us any more information about the proposal. And then, obviously, at least Mr. Carter has one question for you.
Sure, thank you.
And welcome back, it's good to see you.
Good to be back. Hopefully, last time on this project, anyway. So the three aluminum windows were thought to be replaced in the 90s, that was speaking with the building department, that was our best guess. The wood window could be possibly original, again, we don't think that was particularly replaced in the 90s, so apologize for any confusion there. But the one wood window is pretty well deteriorated with dry rot, and it doesn't, doesn't close anymore the way it should. So that's why that window's included in the project. And the remaining second-floor windows will be replaced, but they're on the backside of the building, and they're all the same. Most of them don't close, or they've been rotted out over the years. But these were the windows that fall within the historical review.
Right, these windows are visible from the public right-of-way.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I'll just add, we're looking to match the rest, all the remaining first-floor windows, we are not replacing. They are probably the original windows, all wood, but they're all functional, none of them, one of them has a cracked pane, but we're going to replace that. They're not the most energy-efficient, but they're all functional, they're all original, historical. Our approach here was to the other windows match what's there currently historically and ultimately let the buyer make the decision on how they'd like to proceed with changing or maybe not changing the other existing windows. That's a very, it's a very high-ticket design item that, you know, not only, you know, the historical review would be required, but the owner may have, the new buyer may have some ideas on whether they want to spend the money to replace them with wood windows versus vinyl moving forward. So our goal in replacing the three, they don't match, they're black, the seals have busted, so they're all fogged out, and so we wanted to just, as economically as possible, replace those within the design of the remaining existing windows.
I would just want to confirm the, in figure four, you've seen the staff, so this is from the front, the front elevation of the house. Those are original windows?
As best as we know. That would definitely be my guess.
They're not the vinyl, they have not been?
Single-pane.
Single-pane wood.
Wood, the old latches, they, yeah.
So, and you're not, at this time, proposing to change those?
Correct.
They're functional. Okay. So when you say the remainder, those are the ones in particular you're considering, or you're keeping for the time being?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that.
This particular residence, you know, we're doing, not only on the exterior but on the interior, really trying to stay as true as possible to the history of the house. So we're keeping the doors, all the hardware, the light fixtures, we're redoing the original hardwood floors. And so our thought was, you know, let's not spend $30,000 replacing the existing windows, keep it as original as possible, and then, you know, hopefully the buyer will feel the same way, but, you know.
Okay, thank you very much, and I'm sorry to belabor this, but I am kind of recovering from being ill, so I --
No worries.
Want to make sure that I understand what I, what I think I read
Absolutely.
In the staff report and the attachments. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Smith?
Yes, this is just as much for background as anything else. What did you do to find out about the history of this house?
I have been dying, well, interestingly enough, we've, we've found a little history just digging around in the house, but I've really been wanting to go up to Placerville. I did go to the, to the museum here on Main Street, and they didn't have any information on it. And I've been looking to go up to the one by the fairgrounds, I just, every time, it just works out, every time I drive up there, they happen to be closed.
Here's a tip. Our historic inventory of properties is not complete, it's pretty sparse. But if you talk to Mary Corey at the museum, they have, they have a collection of photographs, postcard-sized photographs, and they're collected according to certain categories and districts. So you can go to Coloma Street.
Okay.
And the addresses don't always correspond because they've changed in the space of 50, 100 years. But you can find possibly the property there, the other can be to have down at the recorder's office.
Okay.
But interesting to find out about a building like that.
Yeah, the smaller house on Wood Street, we were up in the attic doing some work, we found a rafter up there that had John Beach, July 20, I forget the date, July something, 1886.
Wow.
Carved into the rafter up in the attic.
And you know what that means, right?
It's old.
Beach was one of the builders in town.
Okay, yeah, see, we hadn't even investigated that yet. We had talked to a couple of people around town, and it didn't ring a bell with anybody yet, so we were curious as to what his history might be.
The windows in front that you described, do they have weights to control them going up and down?
No, they're, they're double casement. They're not, they're not double-hung.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have questions for the applicant.
I have one, one quick one.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so it's window number four, the one that's by itself on the northwest side of the building, that's the wood one, correct? The three that are together on the southeast, those are the three aluminum?
Correct.
And so it's just the one, number four, is the one that's the wood?
Correct.
Window? Okay. So I forgot to disclose that I did a site visit on this, and I could not see this northwest side of the building from the street. This might play into the later conversation, but I don't know if anybody else was there, but I could not see, you can, you can kind of see barely from this picture, there's a lot of shrubbery and tree coverage on that side, and I could not see that side of the building from the street. Did staff have anything? Is there a view that I missed? Is that readily visible from any right-of-way?
I'll let Ms. Hunter answer more directly, but in general, when staff reviews the visibility from a public street, if there is a hedge or landscaping in the way, we, we would pretend that the landscaping is not there.
Understood. Okay. It is all trees that's blocking it, it's not any other buildings or anything? Okay.
Or an element of the building itself?
Right, it's just --
That would block the view from the street.
That's a good clarification, because I wasn't sure, because I could not see that side of the building at all from the street, so.
Good catch. So, no other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate you coming down here and walking us through the project again.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone in the audience care to comment on this proposal, this application before us? Seeing, seeing no one coming up, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring it back to the commission for consideration. I think that this is a, you know, a solid plan, a good modification to start rehabil, or continue rehabilitating part of our housing stock. I think it's very sensitive to the style, the existing style of the building, what's been chosen. My only change for, for the commission consideration is, in relation to, on page nine, as you know, and we just spoke about that, building facades adjacent to the right-of-way must demonstrate a pedestrian orientation, and we're concerned about visibility from public right-of-way. So in our findings, I just would ask that we consider adding, maybe under finding five statement, just underscoring. It reads in, at the end, "The integrity of the residential historic district and individual structures located therein, comma, as the subject windows are adjacent to the public right-of-way." I just want to make sure that anyone reading, you know, our documents in the future, it's very clear to them that we consider these and we take these elements very seriously, and that, and that's why we're looking at this particular proposal as opposed to something on the, the rear elevation, something that wouldn't be seen from the public right-of-way. So that's the only comment I have. Oh, and also, I would appreciate your consideration under, for Attachment 1, the recommended conditions of approval. If we could just scratch out simulated divided LITE and change that to LIGHT. And then, it's very clear that we're not promoting any one brand that is called, you know, and bear with me, again, I'm still suffering from the effects of the COVID, and so I'll dump on that, but LITE beer, you know, that's a name brand, so I just think it's more objective and consistent if we use LIGHT. So I'll leave it at that. Anyone else care to speak to this or have any comments? Ms. Lepper?
I, I sort of echo. I didn't have questions because my question was around window number four being wood, and if there was really a concern for that. Personally, I think it's not something that is vital to be replaced by a wood window. I appreciate that they're keeping the front facade windows as they are, and I do really appreciate that the design of these ones going in matched that so that the flow is really nice. And I don't, I'm sure staff has used this before, but I really enjoyed, first of all, it's nice to get a window application and not have a stomach ache immediately anymore, so I really appreciate all of the work that's been done to really find a happy medium for these houses to continue to thrive while also being reasonable with our expectations of people. So I just want to say that that has been really nice, and I really enjoyed the, the language you used on page six, talking about how us approving this will continue the life and existing use of the subject dwelling while maintaining the characteristic facade of the structure and creating a more unified architectural appearance. I just thought that was a really strong statement, supporting the decisions that we've been making around these windows, excuse me, around these windows, and, and how we're finding that happy balance now, I think, in our historical district. So I like that. Like I said, I think that doing the one especially, I did not do a site visit, but if that one's not super visible, and I think it's kind of not as important as the front ones in particular that are still there, I'm fine with moving forward with a vinyl window with the, the design that is cohesive with the rest of the windows. And I didn't have any other questions beyond that.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
I guess this is the observations I'd offer regarding the windows. It represents the issue that comes up when you have an old building. They don't remain the same, they're constantly changing. People add a kitchen, an extra bathroom, enclose a porch, things like that. So what we've heard is that these aluminum windows, certainly are not consistent with the arts and crafts or bungalow style of the 1930s. So that's what makes it different from others, is that we're not talking about bringing it back to the original standard. And we have a problem figuring out what the original standard is because we have no photographs. So we don't know if the windows on the side look like the windows that are in front. We might encourage that, but we don't have any standard to go by because we don't know what it looked like in 1938. So I think that's the distinction I draw as to why we might say fine for vinyl and modernized, et cetera, because it's not going to look significantly different than it was in 1938, as far as we know. So I think that's the, the distinction that's principled, that I'd offer.
It's kind of like we're resetting, and, you know, we are going for a, a look that harkens back to the original, but yeah, it definitely is 2024. So, you know, your point well taken. But yeah, it definitely is 2024. So, you know, your point well taken. Mr. Carter, any?
Yeah, so I guess my concern is, is that, you know, we established pretty early on that the casement windows, feature casement windows are a, you know, an important feature of this, of this style of architecture. And it seems to me that the wording in the staff report, you know, I, I agree with it with the spirit of what Commissioner Lepper said, and I agree with the substance of it also. It just seems that the wording in the staff report, which obviously becomes part of the public record, you know, it's numerous times in here, it talks about vinyl being a compatible substitute material, just out of hand. We have obviously been moving, you know, farther and farther down this direction, but in the past, we have talked about a finding that the existing wood window, which is a defining, you know, which, which is a, an actual compatible material, finding that, that that window is not repairable as a justification for allowing vinyl, which we have not found, to my knowledge, as a compatible material. The only compatible one that I think that we've found 100% is that wood core with the composite sheathing that we've approved as a compatible material. But we haven't just carte blanche allowed 100% vinyl windows as a compatible substitute. But it says that in the staff report numerous times. I worry that, you know, we're just essentially giving tacit approval to full vinyl as a, as a compatible substitute material with the staff report. I would like, at minimum, to maybe discuss a finding, and we could take the applicant's word for it, or we, maybe we need some evidence that that window is not repairable, because that is the standard, is that you repair the wood window first before you replace it. We can take the applicant's word if we find it is, you know, good enough to, for a finding that it's not repairable. But I would be more comfortable if we, just like we did on other projects, if we find, if we do another finding that says that that window is not repairable, just that one in particular, because I think it's probably, it's distinctive from the three aluminum windows, which to me are, no problem whatsoever. They're obviously replaced. And they're not serviceable. But that one wood window, and that's why I asked about it being visible from the right of way, because that would have been an easy out. But with staff's clarification that the, the foliage does not eliminate that from the right, you know, from the view. I think we need to maybe explore a finding that that window is not repairable, just to be, falling within the SOI guidelines. I think that is something we should discuss. I'll start there. I have a couple other things, but I'd be interested in, in hearing what you guys thought about that.
I believe when we did the, the mixed one, I think we got into the discussion of how effective that was in terms of, of keeping up the historical standards, the mix of the wood component. I personally, like, came away, I think I voted no on that one, but I also, because I felt like the additional cost and the additional wood that was in it wasn't really providing the outcome that I thought was necessary for what it required. I think I'm down for finding a finding on this wood one. I think because it's not a significant front one. And I, I'm with you because I did think about this, so especially learning from the applicant that those are the front wood windows. If the new owners, it's going to be sold, come back and want to do those front ones, do we, I think that's a situation where we really want to look at holding to the wood because of the significance of the front of it. This side one and being on the top, I, I, I went back and forth mentally and based on our, our past discussions and came to the conclusion that particularly because of the style that they're using, I get the wood component is different than that, but I thought it was sufficient to keep that appearance that we really are going for without necessarily going down the, the wood path. But I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and it is important to me, and it was a consideration. But I think the lack of significance visually of that window kind of made me comfortable with it matching, obviously, the back, we know the back too, which isn't under our purview, but we know that the house is now going to have cohesive windows around the entire backside. So that was why I didn't go towards having a large discussion on wood in the window. I totally understand why you are. But I think doing a finding saying that it is non-repairable and, and of the same style as the, the other windows.
Yeah, I guess I'm concerned with just the consistency of the application of the standards and, you know, whether we like the standards or not, we've had that conversation, obviously, multiple times. But just a carte blanche, say, comprised of vinyl, which is a compatible substitute material for a window that is, that is visible from. I, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that language being in the staff report without some further conversation of how we got to vinyl being a compatible substitute for that particular window. For wood. Because, because in my, in my opinion, it's not. And according to the standards, it's not. But for this project, it very well may be the perfect solution, but we need to, I think, speak to the point of why it is the right solution for this particular project and fall within the standards, if that makes sense to you guys.
I guess I'd add that we have had those kinds of questions, applicants, where we've sought clarification on the condition of what they were replacing. So if you feel there's a, a need or if it'd be helpful, I think we can go back and, and ask those questions about those windows and find out what their condition. There was, in generic terms, allusion to some windows that have been cracked, a paint or two that need to be replaced, that kind of thing. It'd be helpful to know. And that, to make that distinction.
Oh, let's see. Well, let's, Mr. Ming, would you mind coming back up to the podium and answering a few questions that we have based on this discussion? First, let's, did you happen to look at the cost of replacing the windows with a wood or a composite wood substance, or did you just look at the, the vinyl option?
No, we did get, we did look at wood, just as we did with Wood Street. We looked at the wood windows. The cost was three to four times more than the vinyl, and the lead times were three to four months to get the windows. So it was a combination of cost and lead time.
Okay, so timing as well as cost. And also, would you please, for our benefit, elaborate on that non-repairable window?
I'd have to check with my business partner. He handles the construction side of it. I do know there's some, that's siding, because we were here previously about replacing some of the siding. I do know that side of the building has a decent amount of damage from the siding and the trim as well. So, you know, I can't speak to the window frame itself specifically, but it may be as much an issue of the surrounding siding, the surrounding trim work that just all needs to come out and be replaced. And to pull out an old window like that and get it back in when you're doing, you know, you're basically reframing that whole window to do the other repairs, the dry rotten siding repairs. I think he, they just looked at it as that would be quite a challenge, where the vinyl windows come, new construction, they're, you know, you frame it in, it's a plug and play, you're ready to go.
Okay.
And then, like we had, had mentioned, we are only on the second floor. The first floor, we're leaving all the remaining windows, the back of the house as well. On the second floor, the windows on the backside, we are replacing, and they would be vinyl. It's going to be aesthetically all, we're making it possibly either a master suite or, you know, like a bonus room upstairs. And so all the upstairs windows will be visible from one point of view. They're not separated by multiple bedrooms or kitchen, living rooms, something like that. It's, it's more of a, of an open space. So.
From the inside, be consistent.
Yeah, that doesn't apply to the exterior and the historical standards, but from the interior perspective, all the other windows would be replaced with vinyl.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Ming?
It's not, just if you excuse me for making one other comment. When I asked you earlier about the history, it's not required to look into that. But I think that there's two reasons that it might be worth doing. One is because it's interesting. But the second is, as a seller, it can add to the value of the house. S. Beach might have been Seth Beach, who was a state senator, and he had Beach Lumber Company, which is one of the prominent lumber companies locally, that kind of thing. So it can have some intrinsic value in that respect, but that's the only reason I mention it.
We're, we're actually planning to do, our real estate agent was planning to do a little side contract, but a, a whole little brochure, a history of the house and talk specifically about what we've done in retaining, you know, the, the history of the house as much as possible, so. The real estate agent is on top of that.
At about that time, almost 70% of the houses sold in America were from Sears and Roebuck. You go down to the train station, and all the materials would be there, including various styles like this bungalow.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Carter, did you have any language drafted on, I, I realize you have some other things you wanted to talk about, but I.
It's all within, it's all within the same vein, and I, I guess, my issue is, I'll just, I'll just give you a couple of quick examples. Thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry to have you still standing there. Yeah. So on, on item number five on page eight of the staff report, talking about.
Page which?
Uh, page eight, item number five, talking about distinctive materials, features, finishes. Staff's opinion of the proposed project would strive to maintain distinctive materials and features of the dwelling. I would agree that it would maintain the features, but it's definitely not maintaining the distinctive materials. I mean, it's, it's, I know it's, it's small, but that's kind of what I was talking about with the being heavy-handed language in the staff report a little bit. Another example would be, give me a second here. Number six, the first sentence, it's, opinion of staff proposed project does not include the removal of distinctive materials. We're removing a wood window. We are removing a distinctive material. And so there's just, there's a number of, of, of instances in the staff report that I'm uncomfortable with, just because I, I don't think that it's, the way that it's written, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with. I, I feel like it's just kind of, it's like I said earlier, I think it's giving a carte blanche to full vinyl without any qualification. And I would like to add the qualification. And I apologize to answer your question, no, I do not have
Well, we can certainly.
Specific wording, and I, I wasn't, I didn't have the time to prepare.
Hopefully address that concern.
Yeah, and so that's kind of where I'm coming from, just to give you guys an idea of specific, you know, places in the staff report that I had issues with. It's just, you know, yeah.
I, I guess I, I don't take issue with the way the staff report is written because of our actions in the past, and these, these have come up, you know, before the planning commission routinely. However, you know, we have, we have before us, they've gone to the effort of getting a very distinctive style. So that I thought was, speaks to the distinctive, as you said, not materials, but feature of the dwelling, so that we're keeping that, that look, especially from, you know, out at the street.
100%.
We're not walking up and, and kind of scratching the surface. And, and I am not comfortable with burdening homeowners with going to that expense for, for a modest home. And, and this actually is quite, it's a good size structure. Maybe at one time it wasn't so modest, but it definitely had fallen on, in disrepair. And so I want to encourage people to restore these buildings and maintain our housing stock. So, but point well taken, I think. Anyway, I've started to kind of draft finding number seven. And Amy, did you have something you want to add?
No, I was gonna, well, yeah, I have a question. I just wanted to make sure, because I, I totally understand, and I'm very sensitive to exactly what you're saying, and I think I land kind of where you are, but like with total agreement and understanding of your, the concerns that you've raised. And, and they came up to my head as well. Is wood saying something like along the lines, would this hit what you're looking for? Is it staff opinion that the proposed project would strive to maintain the distinctive features of the dwelling, utilizing modern materials while maintaining the look, feel, and style of the original wood windows? Something like that?
That would be the, the perfect explanation of what is happening. And, yeah.
Yeah, because I'm with you. And I also, honestly, if, if they came back with those front ones, I would want to have the ability to make the decision that those are worth being wood. So I do think what you're saying is important and relevant. I do think, especially even just looking at this one, if you told me that was a vinyl window up top now, I would be like, okay. It doesn't look that different visually. So it's not visually stunning. It's not like a stained glass window that we're just throwing away. So in this particular situation, with the location of the window, the style of the replacement, and maintaining the rest of the, the home and allowing it to thrive, I think, does that sound sufficient for?
I'm 100%.
This case in particular, because I, I don't want to do blank, everyone come in for windows or rip your wood windows out, and then we go, oh, well. So I'm with you. I do want to maintain that. But in this particular case.
It's a definite improvement over, over what's there. And I'm 100% in, in agreement that it's, it's going to be an improvement. I just wanted to speak to you know, a, a finding that speaks to why it's not being replaced with wood, just based on our current standards.
100%, and I think that's totally.
This will be a vast improvement.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good. And so did you draft language for a finding that you?
I have been trying to capture the ideas, and I believe you were proposing an edit to the staff report, which I would, I want to leave the.
Staff, please start by proposing some changes to finding six that I think would address what Commissioner Carter was referring to. So basically, I would change it because he's absolutely correct. The way this is stated is, it is not.
Could you speak into the microphone a little more?
Sure.
I apologize, I can't.
No, no, it's okay. How's that? So we would revise it to state, it is the opinion of staff that, and that's where I'm going to add the word although, the proposed project does, striking the word not, include the removal of a distinctive materials in parentheses, then I would put wood. And then, comma.
Oh, up here, okay.
The proposed replacement windows are comprised of vinyl, a compatible substitute material, and include a valence grid pattern consistent with the existing feature windows along the front elevation. And then, because I think we're talking, unfortunately, we're talking about all the windows and not just the wood one, but I would put then maybe a, a semicolon. And given the deteriorated condition of the single wood window.
Yeah, they, that is, and I'd like to specify, we're talking there with number four in the proposal, the wood casement window is not repairable. Also, I appreciate you drafting that additional finding. It's much clearer than one I've written down here. I also would like to say something about the affordability. I think that also is an important finding to substantiate a determination. We've seen this before, so we can, you know, definitely rely on previous proposals that have come before us. But also, we heard tonight that the, the cost of going with wood replacement windows is, far exceeds the cost of the vinyl. And these, so I would like to add a statement that, that the style is harmonious. That, that's really what swung me around, was the style. And, but I had kind of forgotten about this affordability. It's much more affordable than wood replacement windows. What's that? Yes.
Forget what the standard.
Alludes me to, but I think if we say something about affordability, economic impact, I think that definitely comes within the SOI standards.
And that gives us the, the justification for allowing.
Right.
What otherwise would not be a compatible material. So that's what I wanted to speak to.
And speaking to, directly to that wood window, I think, this particular wood window, because again.
Number four.
Yeah, because I don't want to be locked in should someone come forward to not be able to do wood on the front of those ones. So I would like to speak to the affordability and, and I don't know the other word I'm looking for, but for that window, that wood window, not all wood. You know what I mean? That, because of course affordability is always going to come up when wood comes before us. It comes up every time.
The fact that it's not repairable.
It's not repairable, and that this wood window would not benefit from the cost of wood replacement. Because I do think, and I'm not saying any other decisions that I would make or not make, but in general, I want the option to say that these wood windows, yes, they're more expensive, but are worth it. So I don't want to say just wood is unaffordable, that the cost of replacing this one with wood is not reasonable.
So not just the, 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 the cost of the repair?
Wood, yeah, the cost of replacing this particular wood window. Yeah, mm-hmm, is, is what. To this window. Yeah, mm-hmm. Does that make sense?
It does. Did staff kind of catch that conversation?
Taking some notes. We'll have to, we'll take up something together if you, you don't have.
Okay.
I'm sorry to give you a stomach ache back again for. I'm sorry to give you a stomach ache back again for the window.
I think it's important, but I don't like, want to like cry every time I open my package.
I know, I agree.
Historic district window, so that alone is an improvement, um, yeah.
It's good to have these options. Stylistically, you know, we've had this discussion back and forth, and, you know, we had at our workshop, you know, what exactly is it that we're dealing with? But this style that we're looking at, I think, really starts to get us into an area where we have more options for the range of houses and buildings that come before us.
And the style of the windows that they have selected, again, I think are very important to this approval.
Critical, as opposed to going with a vinyl slider.
Yes, exactly.
As you see in a mid-century modern home.
The effort is there, and, and I think it speaks to the, the history of the unit.
So, anything else?
I didn't write those down though, so I hope someone has what they have.
I think I'd like to have either Mr. Revo's read, read back that finding number seven one more time. While you're doing that, finalizing that, I would like to bring back to commission's consideration under number five, adding the phrase at the end of finding number five, "As the subject windows are adjacent to the right-of-way," again, just underscoring, bringing, it was mentioned in the staff report, it's, you know, part of our standards, but again, calling it out specifically that we, that's why we're looking at this, so...
I put the word visible down there.
Did I say adjacent to or visible from?
I put visible and adjacent to the public right-of-way.
As the subject windows are visible and adjacent.
To the public right-of-way.
Visible.
Yeah, it covers it all.
And adjacent to the, to the public right-of-way, okay? That's under number five. And then, under, in attachment one, let's see, under number one, the approval, are, can we go with L-I-G-H-T instead of L-I-T-E? Are you comfortable with that change?
Yeah, it kind of switches between the two throughout the whole report, so if you want them all...
So, you know, that's, that's not really our document. Boy, I was kind of looking at this, that's staff, and I'm sure you'll take this under consideration when this comes before you again, to use the more overarching language as opposed to a brand name. But for our document, what, what lives beyond this meeting, I think, is what our finding, the commission findings are, and the recommended accusations of approval. So that's why I was just going to limit it to that.
Hundred percent.
Okay, great, so we've got that one amendment. And do you have a final number seven finding for us to...
Staff could give a comment. Typically, the findings are more general and they're supported by the analysis of the staff report, because you could find yourself in a situation where you're just repeating the entire, you can then repeat the entirety of the staff analysis as findings. And so, really, what we really should do is make sure that the, that the analysis and the staff report that supports the findings are clear and demonstrate exactly what we all collectively consider to be the truth in this matter to allow you to approve the project. So rather than wordsmithing the findings unless there's an, something that's not correct in the findings, I would recommend going back to each of the actual analyses that are required and adding the additional language necessary to support those findings.
In the staff report?
In the staff report.
As opposed to the information we took from the project applicant here in public session?
If there's new information that you can get directly from the applicant, sure, you can then add that to a finding. But what I'm saying is, it's clear, for example, when, when we reread, read number six to you, it basically corrected a statement that wasn't exactly right, and that should be corrected in the staff report, because you adopt, the staff report is part of the public record.
Right, that was my concern.
So it, it supports then the finding, and I think it addresses what Commissioner Carter had concerns with, that we need to have more accuracy and have, you know, bolster some of these, some of the analysis in the staff report to support the finding. But again, the findings don't need to then just repeat what's in the staff report.
So what is your recommendation for us this evening?
I...
Should we postpone a decision until we can have an amended staff report to consider?
No, I think we can amend, um...
I think I got...
Page eight, number six.
Yeah.
We could, we could amend that as I, and I'm, and I'm happy to state it again, but I'm thinking as far as the cost of the vinyl versus replacing it with wood, that may be something we could add to number five. We can probably wordsmith another sentence or two to bolster that analysis under number five.
Do you think if we remove, on number five, materials and, the word materials and, so it would say, "It is staff's opinion that the proposed project would strive to maintain the distinctive features of the dwelling utilizing modern materials while maintaining the look, feel, and style of the original wood windows." And then in six, we could say, "It is the opinion of staff that the proposed project does not include the removal of salvageable distinctive materials. The proposed replacement windows are comprised of vinyl, race, and compatible substitute material, and include a valence grid pattern consistent with the existing feature windows along the front elevation." Keep the rest the same. Because that also goes to describe the deterioration that we're referencing in our discussion right now, which is also, you know, available for people. And the proposed project would strive to make them consistent. I don't see, oh, and then the last one is under, on page nine, number two, pedestrian orientation. We could remove, again, a compatible substitute material and say, "The proposed replacement windows are comprised of vinyl and include a valence grid pattern consistent with the existing feature windows along the front elevation. Completion of the project would improve the overall pedestrian orientation." I don't see it really anywhere else that is, is doing that. Do you think that would be sufficient?
No, I think those are great, and I like the way you reworded the analysis under item six. I think it's even better than I had stated.
Well, thank you. That's a big compliment, Pierre. Yeah, okay, so are we cool with those being findings within the staff report?
I think that addresses my concerns, yeah.
Support, what our outcomes are.
The only thing missing is the economic impact of the replacement.
Which you said that you could possibly add, was it, was it finding, or sorry, number five, you were going to add some type of economic...
Um, we can, let me see here, so we could say something like...
I thought Mr. Revo's mentioned that as a specific...
Yes, I was just thinking that'd be a good location, just to add one sentence regarding the, the exorbitant cost if we were looking at wood as opposed to vinyl replacement for that singular wind, wood window.
We could say something like, like the replacement of the second-story wood window, or the second-story wood window is beyond, is, uh, the cost of replacing the second-story window with wood is beyond the value that is, I know, yeah, I know.
Maybe something that's like the, similar, just in the same vein where you were going, that the cost of replacement of the second-story wood window with wood would be cost prohibitive and vinyl is a suitable, is then therefore considered a suitable substitute.
I'm concerned about saying cost is prohibitive.
Yeah.
Because we don't have quite a standard. To me, what's significant is that if we're replacing aluminum windows, I don't think it matters that it becomes vinyl, because we're not going to ask them to replace it with aluminum, because that's not what originally was. So once you're going to replace aluminum and you're going to replace wood, why not replace them all with the same material? And then I think what, like, what I think is attractive in the front is that this styling of windows, where you see this separation up on top, that was common for that period. And that is available in all kinds of material, wood, vinyl, et cetera. So if the city council ever gets around to amending the law to allow for vinyl, then one of the requirements can be, that it be consistent with the historic style. So somewhere down the road, these folks may be able to come in and replace those windows in the front with materials that are energy efficient. And I don't care whether, what it's, if it looks like the original, because one of our concerns in terms of public policy, fire resistance and insulation, energy efficiency, and historic preservation. And I'm not sure that you have to compromise, you can have all of those things, because again, over the course of a lifetime, from nineteen thirty-eight to the present, houses are going to undergo a lot of changes. I don't know of any house I own that hasn't had major changes done, all of them consistent with what they originally were. So I would feel less comfortable about saying cost prohibitive, because then we're going to have a standard where it's too ambiguous next line down the road. But I think it's, it's the composite idea that on that side, they've got to do replacements, the aluminum is messy, it's not subject to repair, and so if you replace the aluminum, why not replace the wood? Anyway, I think...
What if we went, oh, I'm so sorry.
That's it.
What if we went with something along the lines of, in this case, the cost of replacing the upstairs wood window with wood does not contribute to the historic nature of the building? Something along those, like, rather than going for price or affordability, does it significantly give to the building to have that be wood, an upstairs window on the side of the house?
Not necessarily, but it is...
It falls within...
It is subject to the standards, because it is officially visible from the right-of-way, so...
True.
I mean, I'd be comfortable with leaving economic completely out of the, out of this conversation or out of the, our findings and just going with the, the finding that's not repairable as a justification.
Right, given the state of deterioration, I would be more comfortable with, it's not just the cost of wood versus vinyl, it's that window has really been weathered and it would require, you know, a lot more, actually invasive work on the system.
On the structure.
Yeah, to, yeah, to put in a wood window, so that...
Can we just...
And we did do that, use that standard for another property that was on the same street.
Yeah.
So we'd be consistent in using that standard.
Across the street, the church property or another one?
It was on Coloma, and I believe it's the same block.
Wait, on Coloma, anyway, so we, yeah, we've, we've used this, we have precedence to talk about the state of deterioration. So are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm down to leave the economic part out of it too, I don't think we need it. Is that, did I dismiss that?
I don't know, I think, given what we learned about that...
Sorry, I was kind of thinking while you were talking.
SOI standards is that economics really is a, a strong argument of, for deviating from, you know, the, replacing the in-kind, so...
I don't have any problem with the phrase, it's the measurability issue, because you can make that argument on almost any change you want to make, it's not cost-effective. When you're a builder, particularly when it's going to be for resale, that's going to be a consideration in everything you do. I think that, that whole side of the house is a patchwork, and so we're going to, there's a need to replace the aluminum. And then you've got one that's wood. Why have that one be replaced with wood if somewhere down the road, another owner wants to have them all done with wood and in a style that they later find out is consistent with that, that time period, much like what we see in the front? So I guess the only concern I have is, how do we make that phrase measurable?
Well, I, you know, I think it's just more of a reasonable standard when, and we've had people come to us before and shown that the cost is double. And so that, I think when you say doubling the cost, that, that is a reasonable argument. I, you know, I don't think that we need to, I don't know how much more information we have to have, to me, that, that on its face is believable and is a, kind of a common sense way to approach talking about this. And that's what we've heard before, is that they are double, and I think that's what we heard tonight, easily double to go with that other material.
There's another factor when it comes to measuring cost and what's affordable. All vinyl windows are not the same. One of the things I look, learned looking at it, is, is it's around the casement, the frame of the window that can allow for lots of insulation loss and heat loss. So we just saw PG&E rates go up, and we know they're going to continue to go up. So one of the things that you have to take in consideration is its energy efficiency. So just because it's vinyl, does it going to be it's the most effective? And wood is more, a better insulator, assuming that what's done around it is, is sealed and effectively insulated. So one of the things that we would have to consider when we're talking about cost effectiveness is energy efficiency, because one vinyl window might be superior to another and provide greater cost savings over a lifetime. The builder might not be concerned with that right now, but somewhere down the road, when someone comes in and wants to replace the whole, whole thing, they could be...
I, you know, I appreciate that energy efficiency argument, and unfortunately, I, I don't know that that's really within, you know, our purview, talking about energy efficiency. It could be that we reach a point that the building code, maybe in the future, might override these kinds of considerations. And so, you know, I really do take that energy efficiency concern very seriously. What we have before us, what's proposed is a reputable manufacturer. There certainly are different grades of windows. Milgard is known to be, you know, a solid manufacturer of these kinds of things. So I think that, you know, this, this proposal has done a good job as far as, you know, selecting not just a style, but a construction of material that's going to be durable, energy-saving, long-lasting, and so I think it is a good quality product.
Well, just so I'm clear, when I use the phrase, it's not that that's the objective, it's that your, your concern was cost.
Right.
And one of the things you look at cost is over the lifetime, ten, twenty, thirty years. That's, and I don't know how we...
Yeah, that would be, you know, that would be quite a bit of analysis, and I definitely think that's beyond, you know, our kind of consideration.
Can I try again with...
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. So...
And, and this is for now, within the staff report?
This is me just trying to come up with some economic feasibility language to come into number five or six, because I think those are the ones...
I think five.
Finding number five?
Yeah, because six is talking about, oh, I see, repaired, okay, either way, but...
Yeah, in the staff report, yeah, on page eight. I think we could insert this into five or six where we talk about the deterioration. This is my kind of stab of bringing in reference to that wood window and financial feasibility. So something like, "Unlike the ground floor wood windows, the cost, the state of and cost of replacement of the wood window with wood in the upstairs area would disrupt cohesion and be financially burdensome, potentially impacting the structure further." So, something like that, that talks about, that was just my really quick, like, stab, but talking about how that one in particular, because the bottom wood ones are in good shape, this one is not. It also impacts the cohesion of the look of the building, which we want to try to stay away from having half, you know, one and then one here, yeah, you know? So the cohesion of the upstairs that we talked about...
In harmony?
Uh, yeah, we just up the...
Okay, we use that term, in harmony with the style?
Yeah.
Of the, the other windows?
Would, the, yes, so unlike the ground floor wood windows, the state of the...
Second-story window?
Yeah, the state of disrepair.
Mm-hmm.
And cost of replacement of wood for wood in the upstairs area would disrupt the harmony and cohesion of the windows? And be financially burdensome, potentially impacting the structure further?
Okay, and it...
I tried to hit like all those little points we've discussed about why this isn't necessary.
So I don't think we need harmony, so disrupt the cohesion of the style?
Uh-huh.
Okay, that's, I think that gets what we're, we're concerned about is that style of the windows.
And then I use the word financially burdensome, because then it's not, it's impossible or it's completely out of line for us to ask that of someone, but we are finding in this case that that window, again, would be financially burdensome to replace with wood. What do we think about that? Adding that into the staff report?
Okay, is that... Okay, is that?
Does that kind of capture?
Does that bolster? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready then to incorporate these into a motion?
Yeah, sausage.
Okay, I have a lot of it written down, so I'd be willing to take the motion on if you guys are okay.
All right, so Ms. Lepper, you'd like to make the motion?
Okay, I'm going to try. All right, here we go. So, I would like to make a motion, let me get myself situated here, that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record as amended, which includes deleting the phrase materials and from number five of the staff report on page eight, and adding the wording features of the dwelling, comma, utilizing modern materials while maintaining the look, feel, and style of the original wood windows. Adjusting number six to add the word salvageable before the word distinctive in the first sentence. Removing the words a compatible substitute material from the second sentence. On page nine, removing the wording a compatible substitute material from C2, the Architectural Design Guidelines. And, okay, so that's.
No, wait, I'm sorry, on page nine, where? C2, okay.
C2, removing the word a compatible substitute material. And adding the wording to number five, did we say about for the financial stuff? Let's see, which one does it go with? New feature, well, I think number six might be good for this. So, adding to number six.
On page.
On page eight of the staff report. Unlike the ground floor wood windows, the state of disrepair and cost of replacement of wood for wood in the upstairs area would disrupt cohesion of the, of style and be financially burdensome, potentially impacting the structure further. Okay. That, okay, so next, I'm going to, so, and then also make the findings in support of SPR 24-01 request as listed on page 10 and 11 of the staff report, with the addition to number five, that at the end after therein, comma, as the subject windows are visible and adjacent to the public right-of-way. And three, conditionally approve SPR 24-01 located at 2968 Coloma Street based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval and attachment one of the staff report dated March 19th, 2024. Did I what?
Sequo.
No, what was I? Oh, oh, sorry, that, and to find that this project is category, I must have skipped that when I was going through, yes. Oh, yes, that the findings one through six are there, including that this is categorically exempt or exempt from the environmental review under SEQUA. Did I get it?
I think there was a change for light.
Oh, and to replace the word L-I-T-E, light, with the word L-I-G-H-T in the report, for clarity.
No, I think, I thought that we were going to have an additional finding, based on the changes that we had in the staff report, discussing the proposed replacement is harmonious and more affordable. So, and did I lose?
I tucked that under number six instead of the staff report.
You put it under, but you didn't make an additional finding.
No, because I thought we were putting that to strengthen the staff findings, because Pierre had said that rather than write a new finding, we were just going to strengthen the staff report. Did I mishear that?
Okay, am I, did I miss something there?
Yes, that's correct. And I would also add, no, maybe I missed it, and you said this, but under Planning Commission Action Number One, Adopt a Staff Report, I would state as amended as part of the public record.
I did say that, and then move forward to amending it.
So, we don't need an additional finding, bringing that information that we amended the staff report with, is my concern, because now we.
Yeah, because we kind of be repeating ourselves if we showed it in the staff and then also reiterated it in the finding.
If those findings are supportable by the contents in the staff report, you're fine.
Uh huh.
You don't need to just then cop, because then you could, you could take it to the nth degree and essentially copy verbatim under each of the applicable finding, all those portions of the staff report.
Uh huh, okay, so having, having, okay, I, in my mind, it was the, the staff report is, you know, the staff's document. And so, but the, what we're making a motion on is we have our specific findings and conditions listed, but the way, by incorporating this staff document, that then bolsters our decision without having to have a specific finding.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Lep, Lep, can I have a second? Okay, all separate, second that motion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I have some language to report this. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project. Thank you for bearing with us as we worked on our language.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And, you know, we hope to do more projects down the road in the Placerville area. Just real quick, kind of two cents, from a design perspective, I know, you know, there's the state standards versus the economic impact in keeping housing affordable, right? In this case, it'd be over $30,000 to replace all these windows. From a public right-of-way perspective, it could often be difficult to even tell whether the window is wood or vinyl, depending on how far back it's set and vegetation and things like that. I think one of the characteristics we tried to stick to that maybe you could consider moving forward is what wood brings is that heft of the frame. You know, with wood, you typically have those wide frames. And so, you know, vinyl, to your point, can come with very narrow frames or thicker frames that do have that overall style. So, just two cents for consideration moving forward, not just grids and casements, but the quality of the vinyl and the heft, the thickness of the vinyl can really give you, at least from a street or a public right-of-way perspective, a very similar perspective that wood would.
Thank you very much. And I just want to comment, you know, I appreciate you helping educate us. I think we all have some experience with this, maybe with the real estate that we've owned and updated, but you obviously are much more experienced. And you can see how we're trying to deliberate that, and you, I think I heard you said there may be more projects coming forward. That, hopefully you can bolster your case and give us more comparisons so that we, it's even clearer, actually, at the staff level, what we get from staff that, you know, it's right there on a table, and we can make quicker deliberation. But thank you very much, and.
My wife and I are business owners on Main Street now, too, so we're, we're loving the community and we're invested, and hopefully we'll do more projects moving forward.
Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Now, this is subject to a 10-day appeal, but, so at this point, we have a 4-0 vote to approve. Is there anything else I need to say about that?
I don't believe so.
I mentioned the 10-day appeal? All right, so now. So, let's move on to item 10.2, which is a site plan review for, site plan review 23-08, Grandpa's Corners Master Sign Plan. Again, this is Ms. Hunter's staff report. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Just to let you know, I own property across the street. I only glanced at it, but I recognized a couple of names of people I've done business with, so I get to take a break.
Okay, so, thank you very much for clarifying that, and we'll let Mr. Smith make his way off the podium.
To a desk in the back.
To a desk in the back.
You could watch.
All right, and then once he's.
You could watch as a citizen.
So, we now have Ms. Lep, or Mr. Carter, myself, and so, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
A master sign plan is required for sites having three or more units, or for those wishing to deviate from the general sign regulations. As commercial signs can have either a positive or negative influence on their surroundings, it is important to carefully consider how the sign will influence the existing attributes and character of the area, providing both functionality and aesthetics. The proposed sign plan, SPR 23-08, covers three parcels, each managed and maintained by one major investor, and includes a mixture of signs. The applicant's sign criteria is provided in attachment two of the staff report, and includes one ground sign, one wall sign, and two options for each building for the placement and size of projecting signs. Firstly, the proposed ground sign is V-shaped, 4.8 feet tall, with a total display area of 33 and a half square feet. Ground signs within commercial zones are restricted to 40 square feet of sign display area, and no more than 10 feet in height. As proposed, the sign is within the allowable sign area and height. The sign would be constructed of hardy panel fiber cement panels, painted yellow to match the building within Grandpa's Corner, and would have a stacked stone base. As described in the memorandum provided to you prior to the meeting, the ground sign would be located within the city right-of-way near the intersection of Green Valley Road and Easy Street. The applicant worked directly with the city engineering department to find a suitable location that would not impact site distance or the planned Placerville Drive Improvement Project, and that would also provide adequate advertising to Grandpa's Corners. Additionally, the applicant has proposed the use of solar spotlights to illuminate the tenant copy on the ground sign. Two spotlights would be placed on either side of the sign to illuminate tenant copy. Next, for Suite A of 7533 Green Valley Road, the applicant has proposed a 24-square-foot wall sign. The sign material proposed is CNC routed, high-density urethane with a wood texture. The sign would have a semi-gloss background and white border. Based on the frontage of the building, provided in figure six of the staff report, the maximum allowed wall sign area for the building is 167 square feet. As such, the wall sign is well within the allowed sign area. Lastly, for the front facades of each building, tenants would be identified with projecting signs. For single tenants occupying the entire building, such as Gear Tooth Air Works, a single projecting sign of eight feet by 1.2 feet would be utilized. For multiple tenants within a building, each tenant would have a sign of two feet by one and a half, 1.2 feet. Figure four and attachment two of the staff report provide elevations of each option. Based on the calculation for maximum allowable sign area and the linear frontage of each building within the center is limited to 32 square feet total projecting sign area. In the event each building, not including 7533A, had a maximum amount of tenants, the projecting sign area would not exceed 13.9 square feet for 7533, B, C, and D, 9.3 square feet for 7553, and 13.9 square feet for 7559. Of note, the projecting signs proposed for 7559 Green Valley Road do not comply with the general height requirement of eight feet from the base of the sign to the ground. However, pursuant to the master sign permit regulations, the planning commission may approve a deviation from the projecting sign standards, including this height requirement. It is the opinion of staff that the signs are well within the limit of protruding objects for accessible pathways, and do not constitute a safety concern. Similar to the wall sign, the projecting signs would be CNC routed, high-density urethane with a wood texture, a semi-gloss background, and a light border. Overall, it is the opinion of staff that the master sign plan is consistent with the general plan, natural, cultural, cultural and scenic resources and community design elements, as the signs will be of professional quality, will have finishes that complement the existing buildings, and will provide adequate signage to all buildings within Grandpa's Corners. Further, the project is consistent with zoning ordinance section 10-4-17 and the Placerville Development Guide, as the signs are well-designed, located in a manner not to result in a visual impairment, and will enhance the existing structures while providing adequate business identification. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQUA guidelines section 15301 and 15303, as the project includes construction of an accessory sign structure and placement of on-premise signs that shall not result in an expansion of the existing uses. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the SPR 23-08 request, including staff's recommended modification to action two and the additional finding included in the memorandum distributed prior to tonight's meeting, and conditionally approve SPR 23-08 located at 7533, 7553, and 7559 Green Valley Road based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report and memorandum dated March 19th, 2024. Of note, the prior mention of action two above, we noticed an error on page nine of the staff report, and so for the recommended action two, the reference to a conditional use permit is incorrect and should be removed. This recommendation was included in the memorandum. It's one of the first recommendations. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. So, I was just making a note that part of our action we can take is to adopt the staff report and the memorandum dated March 19th. That was, okay, 319, all right, I want to make this quick note. Thank you very much. That, I found this a little bit confusing, and I do have a few questions for you. One thing, jumping back and forth, the, the units of measurement in the that were provided by the applicant are in, I think in, square feet as opposed, wait, inches as opposed to feet, but I was able to kind of match everything up. I also want to be clear that what the city calls a projecting sign is referred to as a facade sign in the attachment two provided by the applicant. And so they refer to it as a facade, and we call it a projecting sign, and we call it a ground sign, not a monument sign. So, I just want to make sure that I, we have, we're clear on that.
In our zoning ordinance, monument signs are considered ground signs.
Okay.
But I understand the point.
Okay, so we're talking all about the same, just in different terms, same thing. Do either of you have questions for staff?
I do, but you can go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Mine's pretty minimal.
Please.
I just had a couple of questions. Let's see here. One, I wrote down, so I must have been confused, that the, the light on page four of the staff report, that is the actual look of the light that's proposed to light up the monument sign, correct? That model of light?
Yes, the specifications in, I think, attachment four, and then, I believe I.
I feel like maybe I got clarity, but I wrote that down. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear that that is the design of the light. It also mentions in the narrative, attachment two, on page. I know, it doesn't have page numbers. It's just a little hard. So, I guess, one, two, three, four, page five, number four and five. So, it says landlord may elect to install goose neck lighting to illuminate facade signs, but I didn't remember seeing an approval in there of a design for the goose neck lighting, if there is one. Also, number five, landlord reserves the right from time to time to allow exceptions to Grandpa's Corners sign criteria with regard to location of facade signs subject to the city of Placerville approval when necessary. I just thought that was kind of an odd statement. I wasn't sure if that's an agreement we're making with them, that they have leeway, or if that was just their proposed language.
That is their proposed language.
Okay, but that doesn't, we're not held to that description there.
It would be what you approved tonight.
Okay, great.
And on the goose neck lighting, we did not have any specifications provided. So, that is not included in staff's analysis.
Okay, great. So, those two were just questions that I didn't have full information on. Those are all my questions for right now.
My only question, same page of that attachment two, page five, the vinyl window and door signs. It was my understanding that those would be included in the calculations for overall square footage, but I didn't see them included.
Window signs are exempt from calculations.
I was wrong about that.
They just cannot exceed 25% of the window pane.
I was wrong about that then, thank you.
So, this meets our standard then?
Yes.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
And the directional sign, that's addressed in memorandum from today, March 19th, to. And the directional sign, that's addressed in memorandum from today, March 19, to... Oh, actually, that's actually not written as a condition of approval.
It's a recommended condition of approval.
Right. So that's, right, I understand that directional signs are exempt from commission approval. The only thing I saw in the narrative from the applicant is that they talk about no more than 24 inches long, but 24 inches high. So in your memorandum, you're looking for a little more specificity as to... I saw in one of the site plans that kind of said directional sign to be placed here. So you don't have the information that you're comfortable with in approving?
We just want to look at elevations and then a more specific location. Doesn't necessarily need to come before the commission again, just make sure that it complies.
Uh-huh, so that would just be under staff approval. Okay, understood. And any, let's see. And there's just a single projecting sign or facade sign that does not comply with the general requirement to be 8 feet? There's just the one, or?
There is a possibility of one or three.
Oh, okay.
When you're facing Grandpa's Corner, it's the one, the building on the far right. The distance is 7 feet rather than 8.
Okay, so by approving this, then all of the projecting signs might be 7 feet above ground, might not meet the 8-foot requirement?
It was the only building where it did not comply.
That was the only building.
The only building.
But the other...
And it's a private walkway. We spoke with the building official who confirmed four accessible walkways. I believe the language was... Oh, I read it. Where'd it go?
Okay, now I understand. Okay, I thought we had...
Protruding objects, I apologize, four accessible pathways. The minimum is 6 and 1/2 feet.
Okay. I think that's it then. So we have the agent from... Would you like to come up to the podium and tell us a little bit more about the project? I don't know if either of you have questions for... And if you would, state your name for the record.
Thank you. I'm Ann McQuillan. I am the broker for Team Commercial. In full disclosure, between my two companies, I completely occupy 7533 Green Valley Road. Our intent here was to take this group of buildings that was in fair to really poor condition when it was purchased and give it a facelift, bring it into the current century, get rid of the old facade sign, or the parapet signs that were broken and cracked and that kind of thing, and didn't work. In the process of doing this, it made more sense for us to have things like one location for the mail. We used to have mailboxes back in the rural days. We have a parking lot agreement so that everything is now shared. We are 100% occupied since we have renovated these buildings. We would like our signage to be more modern than what we experienced and what has been approved in the past. There is, on 7533, there's an old sign criteria, I guess is the best description, that was approved back in the 80s. Interestingly enough, none of the signs that existed on the building when we took it over and took over the management complied with that sign agreement. Everybody just ignored it and did their own thing. So the goal here is to have adequate signing. We are destination businesses for the most part, the exception being obviously the brewery. You don't suddenly decide you're going to drop into a dog class as you're driving by. It just doesn't happen. So we're looking for signage that makes it easy to find us and at the same time blends in and gives it a much more modern flavor. The directional sign came about because people get lost in our parking lot. I get phone calls saying, "We can't find you. Where are you located?" And when I say, "Where are you?", and they're saying, "I'm sitting under 7533 sign", and we say, "Get out of your car and walk to the left." There is a 6,000-square-foot building there that you cannot see from the parking lot. And so people get lost there. As my dog training facility has been there now, this is our sixth year, scary, that is becoming less of an issue for us. But if we were to relocate, having the option of having that directional sign so somebody could go, "Suite A is that way." The concept is something small and relatively short and unobtrusive that's setting at the edge, just saying, "There's another building back here, folks." So that was the concept with the sign. And the thought would be that it would be something similar, it'd be made out of the same material. That is the material we're using for Hangtown Village Square, and it holds up really well. It holds its colors really well and is way cheaper than the wood that warps and dies quickly. So that was the concept behind it. Mr. Jernigan, who is the managing partner for all of the LLCs that own this center, owns other properties on Main Streets and in several other locations in town. For him, it's all about, how can I enhance it? How can I create the legacy of this center? We named it Grandpa's Corners simply because we used to joke about the fact that if Grandpa's Pharmacy ever moved, nobody'd ever find our real estate office again, because that's how we gave directions. Now we give directions by asking people, "Do you know where Grandpa's Pharmacy used to be?" "We're down the street." That's where the name came from. It honors what has been there and what was a very successful business in our location. Our goal with the monument sign is to make it easy to find us. Green Valley Road is one of those roads where people make the turn and put their foot on the gas and fly down the street. And I know that you guys are working hard on trying to help with that. And additionally, if they're coming off a mallard or coming from the mallard side, same scenario, go through the stop sign, hit the gas, go as fast as you can. We wanted our sign to be easy to read, simple. We're not doing any advertising. It's just going to be Team Real Estate, brewery name, our salon name. Something simple so that somebody sitting at the stoplight at Placerville Drill Drive before they decide to go speeding around the corner can realize, "Oh, there's the driveway I need." So the concept was to keep it very, very simple. We've looked at three different locations for the sign, but this one seems to be the best and meet the needs of the landlord and at the same time work for the city because of what we have that's coming down the road, hopefully sometime soon, with sidewalks so that people are no longer walking down the middle of Green Valley Road and getting, having problems. So that's the concept behind it. I'm happy to answer any questions. The buildings we're working with, the 7559, one of the issues there is that building is just an X number of inches shorter than the other two. So we did the best we could with a building that was already there. The other two, we can make the heights, and that's not an issue. I'm happy to answer any questions or if you've got...
Thank you, thank you very much, walking us through the project. And I concur. I think it's a very clean design and the updating of the buildings, really nice, and the design of the sign, clear, easy to see from two directions, coming down Green Valley, either from, I guess, west or south, and turning off of Placerville Drive. You've done a very good job with the design.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. And I also want to thank you for coming down here and representing, you know, the project and making yourself available. It always makes it easier on the commission to have someone to answer those questions. And so do either of you have questions for...
I just have a quick question about that lighting. So is your intention to have goose neck lighting on the signs that are above?
I'm sorry, say again.
The lighting that's mentioned in the narrative?
On the...
Goose neck lighting over the projecting or the facade signs?
If you, I don't know if you noticed, but there is already goose neck lighting on one of the buildings.
That's the Gear Tooth Ale Works?
So it is over the brewery, where the brewery used to be, or where the chiropractor used to be. The reason that was included is a couple of years ago, second floor suggested that we should add that language in case, basically to make that legal lighting, because that was part of the, "Oh, we'll just put goose necks up here", and we really didn't get it permitted. We inherited a lot of that as we...
Totally.
Renovate stuff. So that language was included so if at some future date a tenant needed it added in one of the other buildings, it would be an option. It obviously would have to come back to planning because we're making a modification, a fairly major modification of the facade. We don't, we're not married to that in any way.
And I'm really not against it. I've taken a class at the dog facility and was in the winter and at night, and by the time I got there, it was dark. So I actually think it would maybe be beneficial, especially if done in a really nice way. So that's why I ask is if you do want that, to ensure that you come back around for that approval too.
Yeah, I think that the intention here was to legitimize the goose neck that's currently in place, which will be utilized by the brewery. There's no plans for the other, the other businesses, you know, people just need to know where we are. We're destination businesses. Once they know where we are, then, you know, they don't need to, it's not going to like, they're going to drive by and see it and drive in. We're not Apple-based.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, I think this is a really great project, and I appreciate the details that you have come up with, and I think that they suit the building well.
Right, and so you have existing goose neck style lighting, and so what you're saying in your narrative is just, should that come along, you'll be consistent so that you don't have different styles, because you've done a great job making it all the same, you know, the same, yeah, similar style so it flows, so...
Our goal was to give it a facelift.
Facelift.
And I think we accomplished that. This is the last piece between everything else we've done so that our businesses are a little bit more visible. We've been sort of invisible for quite a while.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and we'll let you sit down right now, Ann. I really appreciate you answering our questions. So to follow up on the lighting, Mr. Revis, so if another business, I'm thinking that that goose neck lighting was approved when the brewery came to planning commission a few years ago. I remember we were talking about the lighting, so that, I didn't look up the file, but I imagine we approved that as part of that package.
You know, I can make that assumption, but I can tell you for certain if that was the case, because the outdoor lighting of these buildings are not before you. This is only a master sign plan.
Right, so if they did want to add the lighting, that they would have to come...
They'd have to come back.
With a proposal?
Unless it was something approved with Gear Tooth.
Okay, all right. Good. My only other concern is the use of the, in our recommended action, recommended conditions of approval, number one, we're calling it a two-faced ground sign, and that phrase has some negative connotations. I was going to say that we just call it bidirectional or two, a sign listing the tenants on each of the two sides. We're trying to, I think, condense it a little too much. I think we just need to expand and talk about how it has two sides, it's not two-faced, or double-sided, that also implies something else. And I also saw that, so all three of the added conditions of approval in memo from today includes, so this encroachment permit for the, obtaining an encroachment permit for the ground sign itself and entering into a required agreement with the city for the placement of the ground sign. And then number three is that proposed directional signage. So that is the third added condition of approval. And I just want to check, Ms. Hunter, we would just append those so that we would have 10, 11, 12, 12 conditions? So just add those on after order doesn't matter in our conditions of approval, we can just insert those? Okay, great. Well, I'm definitely in favor of this. I think the signs proposed are sufficient and of very good quality, consistent, and I like the look, and I think it's going to really, the updating of that whole center is a good thing for the area.
I agree. My only concerns were addressed in the memo with the encroachment permit. That was going to be my main question. And that was addressed, and yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that the exception of the 7-foot to 8-foot does not have any kind of impact or precedent that's out of line, so I think that's completely fine, totally reasonable. I'm in favor of the directional sign as well, because just like we heard at the smog place the other day, you know, we don't want people to be getting in accidents looking for stuff, so I'm always in favor of clear signage, so...
And just making it very clear that, you know, it's a staff-level approval, so that they have a record of exactly where it's going to be, and I have confidence that it will blend in with all the other work that you've done to make this shopping area really pleasant to look at. Do we need to specify something about how we're not approving any lighting? I'm a little put off because in the applicant's attachment, they say landlord may elect to install, but it doesn't say anything about planning commission approval, like is the next item, number five, right before that on Page 5. Should we specify that we aren't approving any lighting?
I believe that the best place to put that would be under condition of approval 1I for the sign criteria narrative, indicating that the goose neck lighting is not included in the approval. We can make a note of that.
So under number one, just add a phrase?
Okay.
From staff's perspective, it's not necessary, because you're approving a master sign plan. So if you want to specify more, just say the master sign plan includes sign criteria narrative, includes the wall sign, projecting sign, so it focuses in on that, because then we can, we could cherry pick other issues that might be on the site that we're not even aware of.
In the narrative, too.
In addition to sign, to outdoor lighting, so...
And that's why I just wanted clarity on the lighting, not necessarily, I don't think we have to incorporate it per se. I just wanted, when I saw that written kind of really assertively, I just wanted to touch base that that's not, yeah.
Again, I want to be very clear that we're talking, you know, just about the sign.
It's not mentioned in the report.
And it's limited to the solar landscaping for the ground sign.
Yeah, that's, I thought the report was fine. It was just that writing, that in the narrative, I just wanted to clarify that, that that is not in play here, nor is it allowable without review. Okay?
All right.
So, shall I try again?
So I'd be happy to take them...
It's okay, you two sickies, just don't get me sick. All right, so I would like to make a motion that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, that we find that the, and we'll remove the conditional use permit language there as recommended in the staff memo dated March 19, 2024, but find that the site plan review requests are exempt from environmental review under SEQA, and make the following findings in support of Site Plan Review 23-08, which include items number 1 through 5 as listed on the staff report, Page 10, and conditionally approve SPR 23-08 located at 7533, 7553, and 7559 Green Valley Road, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report dated March 19, 2024, as well as the updated conditions of approval as described in the memo memorandum dated March 19, 2024. March 19, 2024 that include conditions of approval related to the encroachment permit.
And the directional signage.
Yes. Oh, excuse me, yes. And to update condition number one on Attachment 1 to replace the word "two-faced" with "bidirectional ground sign."
Thank you.
I think I hit it. Yeah. And conditionally approve it. Yep. So.
I just offer a quick...
Yeah.
Just adding, adopt the staff report and the memo dated 3/19/24 as part of the public record.
Absolutely. I will amend my motion to include, we say...
Include it later on, but I think...
Adopt the staff report as well as the staff memorandum.
I thought you had said that.
No, but yeah. No problem on that clarity. So yes, as well as the commission. Thank you.
I want to verify that you... There is a sixth recommended finding that was included in the memorandum.
Oops.
No, it's okay. And then I wanted to make sure that the recommended condition of approval that was in the memorandum, number two, for the sign agreement, is also included.
The applicant shall enter into agreement with the city for the placement. Yes. So conditions one, two, and three is described in the memorandum. And then you're right, adding a sixth finding that the project request is consistent with zoning ordinance section 10-4-17i, prohibited locations as the placement of the ground sign shall not result in visual obstruction at the intersection of Green Valley Road and Easy Street. Did I get it? Okay. All right.
And I will second that as amended.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepa?
Aye.
Okay. That's his three.
Ms. Smith has recused.
Congratulations. Thank you very much again. Thank you so much for improving the look of that whole shopping retail center. This is subject to a 10-day appeal. So other than that, good luck and thanks again. Moving on to number... Item 11, continued items, we have none. Oh, that's right. He didn't leave the building, he just left the room.
Yes. Ask when Spankies will get a facelift.
You're sinking fast. Now that we're all in attendance, we'll move on to item 11, continued items, which we have none. And number 12, new business, which we have none. And then number 13, matters from commissioners and staff. We'll go on to 13.1, staff reports, for staff to update us on the status of upcoming meetings, recent actions, and so on. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Hunter.
I guess I'll start. We do anticipate a meeting on April 2. You should have received a copy of the notice of public hearing. At that meeting, we also intend to have the voting for chair and vice chair, assuming we have all five members. And we also anticipate a workshop presentation and a special committee item, the memo we did receive it. So it will be on the next agenda.
And that's on April 2. Okay. Now we'll move on to... And that's it, nothing from... Oh, Mr. Revoz, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Things are continuing to move forward for both the Middletown and the Mallard affordable housing projects with the improved weather. Hopefully, they'll be able then to start continuing with the grading. We're almost done with finalizing the improvement plans. We're working closely with our engineering department to get that done. So we're happy about that, to really find projects that are going to help our housing affordability situation in the city. Staff has been meeting with D.H. Horton, the home builder. They are interested in buying that piece of property that lies just above where the Mallard affordable housing apartments are going to be located. They're looking at doing a modification to the approved Ridge at Orchard Hill plan development that currently showed 84 townhomes up there. And so they're probably looking at maybe about 70 or so single-family detached units.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear where this is located?
This is located above where the Mallard apartment project is, off of Mallard, the affordable housing project there.
The renovation facility.
And it's within the Ridge at Orchard Hill plan development. So an application would come forward, you know, to you. And that would be a tentative map. That would be an amendment to, in a rezone to the Ridge at Orchard Hill subdivision. So we're very excited about that. These homes will be, they'll probably average in size from 1,200 to 1,400 square feet. So they'll provide a more affordable entry-level, single-family homes for home buyers.
Fantastic. Good news. All right. And move on to 13.2, planning commission matters. So we'll just jump down to 13.21, Special Committee reports. So the report by the historic review, Special Committee.
Yeah. So as staff outlined, it'll be on our next agenda. So we tried to get it to them in time to have it on tonight, which actually worked out pretty well with me not feeling well. It wasn't on tonight's agenda, but it will be on our next agenda. So I look forward to getting the input of the full commission on our...
Okay. And at that time, so that will be part of our packet for...
Yes. You'll receive the memorandum and attachments in your packet.
Okay.
Just to let you know, there won't be any surprises. It's the same thing that we've all been aware of with the resolution of the...
Yeah, no blockbusters.
...city council about nine years ago as to a list of responsibilities that the commission has, one of which is to provide advice to the city council. And it certainly seems like with all the discussion we've had, including tonight, there's lots of need to make some suggestions about the way the historic standards are used in the city. So our memo is about four pages and mostly goes over those areas and proposes that we have workshops, something we've talked about for about a year. It's important to hear from the public and get their input, not only because we welcome that kind of expertise in addition to whatever we've developed, but also because whatever we ultimately recommend, it's going to have more weight, more faith if the final product reflects the views of the public that they've had a chance to be heard. And in that way, if it's a, in a workshop format, it doesn't have to be limited to three minutes, although it depends on how many people show up. You never know. But you're not going to have a developer, a contractor, for example, who's going to come down and spend several hours to speak for just three minutes. And there's lots of questions you may well have. So that's what we had in mind, is to give you a preview of what to expect.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, and I appreciate... I know this is something that's Michael Friend's committee, but on behalf of him, just thank you for your hard work.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a quick question?
Anything else? Yes.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, Miss Daff. Our conversation earlier, Pierre spurred my memory about the bylaws. Can we get an update? I know Commissioner Lepa and I had both suggested some changes. It's been almost a year, I think, since we... Is there any update on the status of the bylaw updates?
I have to refresh that, and we'd have to bring it back.
Okay.
I just, yeah. Can't really recall.
I totally forgotten about it, and then our conversation earlier just reminded me that we had never kind of talked about those...
It's back around.
Yeah, it never came back in front of us after we made those recommended changes almost a year ago, so.
Probably still have it if I need to send it back over.
But if it's on the calendar, it could be discussed. Am I correct?
If all five of us are here.
Yeah.
Right.
It's one of those items that has to be on five.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'm hungry.
Thank you all, and I hope you feel better soon, Mr. Carter, and everyone else stay healthy.
You as well.
And it is 7:59, and we are adjourning the meeting for tonight. Thank you.